Call this meeting ordered. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, to the public of its citizens, one nation, one empire, and to the people of this world.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Joseph Okuri, Sam Barrett, Robert Michael Acheck, Detective Sergeant Cody Becker, Detective Mike Baker, and Detective Isaiah Emmaneiser from the Northern York County Regional Police Officers that were killed in the line of duty. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. There will be a motion this evening to suspend the rules and move items 5F and 5G from fifth to seventh order for a final vote. Anyone who would like to speak on these pieces of legislation may do so in fourth order during citizens' participation. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Report, reviewed August 25, 2025. 3B, Minister of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting Held August 20, 2025. 3C, Minister of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held August 20, 2025. 3D, Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held September 17, 2025. 3E, Minister of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting Held August 20, 2025. 3F, Minister of the Composite Pension Board Meeting Held August 20, 2025. 3G, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report for Year-to-Day, September 12, 2025, and Year-to-Year Comparison Report for September 9, 2024 through September 12, 2025.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Just to, it might be a little premature, but Sunday, October 12 is the Steentown Marathon, 28th Annual Steentown Marathon. The course was changed this year, which actually I think is going to be better for traffic control. The way the runners come into the city, they'll still come in Boulevard Avenue and take a left up Electric Street, but when they get up to the islands, they're going to take a right and go directly out Capous Avenue. They'll just head directly down Capous to Walnut, take a left on Walnut, and a right on North Washington, straight in. So in the past, we used to go all the way up Electric up to North Washington, go over to Delaware, come back down. So we kind of boxed in that neighborhood. So that has been eliminated. We'll ask, you know, people on that particular day to just be a little patient. We'll get vehicles across the course if they have to come through town. If you're over in Greenridge area, the best way is to cross at Greenridge Street. We'll have police there helping to cross people. If you want to get around the marathon downtown, the best way is to go down around Lackawanna Avenue will get you around. Or even, I believe, Spurges or Biden Street will be open, one lane during the race. So that's about it. Then we, I should also mention, we do have runners coming from about 36 different states and a couple countries. So pretty exciting, good for the area, and St. Joseph's Center.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else?
Yes, I just wanted to say Shana Tova. So happy rush to Shana to those who celebrate. That's the Jewish New Year, so taking place today and tomorrow. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raischard. Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Norma Jeffries, you're good from before. All right, thank you. Joan Hoda-Wanis?
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. First, I want to mention that every morning when I go to Mass, I see these gentlemen with humongous garbage cans walking up and down the sidewalks, picking up litter. Now, I don't know whether that's their city employees or for a nonprofit or whatever, but it sure is nice to see someone trying to clean up the litter. So whoever's doing it, thank you. Has anybody applied to become the Director of DPW yet?
No, no, not that I know of.
Okey-dokey. And we're still working on their collective bargaining agreement?
Yeah, I know. They do have a meeting scheduled.
Okay. Now, the 2024 audit, you mentioned before that it should be in by September 30. Is there any hope of seeing a copy of it in third order for next week's meeting, which will be September 30?
Well, they said our auditors are in the final review of it, so it should be done.
Okey-dokey. I'm looking forward to it. And now let's talk about item 7B. This is the ordinance authorizing your entry-level employment in the police department without competition under certain conditions affecting public safety. I still see red flags on this. Another Scranton taxpayer contacted me and very kindly sent me a copy of Chapter 144, the state's law on civil service, and pointed out Section 14407, tenure and temporary appointments. Temporary appointments in case of riot or emergency. Temporary appointments to positions in the civil service may be made without complying with the provisions of this chapter. I don't understand what might be in the Home Rule Charter that would supersede a thing like this. Certainly, we're not having a riot or an emergency situation that I've heard about. But I have several questions. I asked last week whether the police union was contacted for input on this, and I really didn't get a positive answer. I talked to some people when I was at the Police Pension Commission last week and asked them if they were aware of this legislation, and they said they hadn't heard of it. But it raises certain questions. If you look at the union contract, when police are normally hired, they're automatically entered into the union, and they start paying into the pension, and you get pension eligibility, so on and so forth. Will these hires be entered into the union?
Joan, the way it was explained to me, it still goes to the Civil Service Commission. They supply the list, the chief.
That doesn't answer my question. Will they be in the union?
Everything else is supposed to be in the same order. The only difference would be if they did possess Act 120 or something equivalent to it, they would accept that instead of making them go back to school and do it over again.
So they have to become members of the union. They will be eligible for pensions, including disability pension. They will be eligible for heart and lung benefits, eligible for promotion exams. How do they determine seniority with those who were hired under competition?
Well, that's, you start day one.
They go to the bottom of the list.
Bottom of the list?
Yep.
Yeah, day one is day one.
But I really think that there are a lot of questions, and I don't, if you, if the administration has not consulted with the union for input, I think you should table this and bring the union in, bring the police chief in, bring the head of civil service in, if their solicitors are available, bring them in. You should not let this go forward and then down the road have issues, because the last thing this city needs is more union controversy and, God forbid, more lawsuits. You know, we should, if we're going to hire these people, they should know what their protections are and what their requirements are. And the union should be aware. This should not be dropped on them without their involvement. I know you're going to pass it, but I recommend you table it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Ron Elman? Ron?
I'm not endorsing the mayor or anyone, in case some of you wondered. People, you know, undoubtedly, when I talk up here, I'm not reaching the right people, the ones who pay for everything, and I guess you call them the quiet ones. Yesterday, they auctioned off 150 properties here in the county. I've talked to a couple people over the years that lost their property like that. It's so heartbreaking. I realize that probably most of them were financial problems. One lady I talked to years ago, Catholic services loaded her house up. The people destroyed it. They wouldn't help her one iota. She didn't have money to do the repairs. She lost it, lived right across the street. I don't know. She's probably not there anymore. This was probably 10 years ago. We have a downtown just overrun by wealthy developers and property owners. Most of them already have tremendous tax breaks. Some of them have, just are these historic buildings next to no tax. And we're looking at a woman that wants to sell properties like the hospital to nonprofits. Almost every street you go down got some kind of abandoned house we've lost the tax base on. In my block, I got three houses on one block. The lady died at one house. The next two houses are vacant. The house across the street, the man was constructing it and ran out of money. But that's four of them, but the three are the one on my side of the street that are just, they don't cut the grass or nothing. They did recently, I guess, I guess Olowski's office got on them. These 150 properties, there's people that I talked to that are so fearful of it. I told them here about the deferred tax plan. I don't know if anyone took advantage of it. But so many people are just fearful of coming up here and talking about this. This administration is just a vile, relentless, vindictive one. Maybe they're fearful of having their car towed in while they're drinking coffee, or even worse, getting some tickets for uncovered garbage cans. I don't know. Hopefully, maybe one of these tax chiefs will open up a casino downtown so we'll have a cheap buffet like Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. That is all for our sign-in sheet. Would anyone else like to address council?
Good evening, council. Tom Coymanuka. I see that the mayor got weekend four of advertisements from the Times for the Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project. When we last had the last walkability, it was underfunded, and we were assured it would come back to us to review, they would come back to us to review the plans. I guess we'll get the plans and have it bid out, and then we'll get told what it'll be before we can actually have an input on it. The mayor has constantly said, "The citizens of Scranton, your input is neither wanted nor desired." If we put a big wall around the bike trail, we can keep out all other parts of the city that we have chosen with all the funds that we have gathered not to fund. That brings me back to the Recovery Act under this administration. They allocated the funds by supposed stakeholders and meetings that they had set on their YouTube channel when they released it. I did a public right to know and found out that the stakeholders and meetings that they said that they had never happened, because I asked for names of people who were at those meetings. And there were no names. There were no stakeholders. There were no meetings. But the YouTube channel that the mayor put out said, "We gathered all this information." I guess all the stakeholders were probably internal to the government deciding in the mayor's office what they wanted, because the right to know certainly said that stakeholders outside never were brought in for an input. Ignore the public. That's what we had to deal with. We've had the Times who produces one-sided supportive stories for the mayor. It does not challenge the fact. It does not show the timelines. But I guess like Jimmy, the Kimmel issue, it does not want to risk rocking the local boat with the government that takes out ads. This is silly, because there's no other publication in a city that the city can actually use as part of their operations. So we've had four weekends of the mayor's projects, not a peep out of public concerns. We had, we now have 5B repealing outdated provisions regarding the city's pavings of streets. Can anyone on council tell us what is outdated in there, what we are removing at all, what is replacing it? Because there is nothing in the body that actually shows us what's being struck and what's being replaced. Every other legislative body, when something like this comes up or something struck, you get the legislation that is being removed with the lines through it, and anything that's added in it is actually written in it that's going to be applied. Are we removing all pavement guidelines, and now it's, pavement is whatever the city says it is? Because all I see in here is striking all of the rules. I see nothing on adding.
We discussed that during caucus, and we're going to be requesting that exact detail.
Thank you. Maybe it should have been presented in this before it came to the body, because that detail is not something that should be forgotten. It should have been here before this was even presented up here. 5F, the United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania, $150,000 towards that exterior upgrade grade projects. For years, we've asked about code red when the fires were burning in Canada and people were told to stay inside. Recovery funds went to Keystone. We even paid for a coordinator for the position for the charities. We have a secret, unsheltered task force who meets behind closed doors and has now has talked and done nothing. Maybe the mayor will take the lead from Fox News, who said, "Maybe with the homeless, we should jail them or euthanize them." Euthanize them. We have done nothing so far, but that's okay, as long as we don't have a cold snap before the elections. We're looking at snow. We're looking at winter. We're looking at $150,000 to fix the outside of the building, and we have done nothing for the homeless. This is the city of Scranton's humanity. Shameful. Good night.
Thank you.
Relax, you're not getting served. Good evening, council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, I'll speak about our roads, infrastructure, blight, and our amazing DPW employees. Mr. Schuster is the Chair for Public Works. I would strongly suggest that you hear me twice, because I only say this once. It's not the speaker before you. It's the words they choose. My words get ignored. You also ignore the same concerns of many other residents. As of today, we have only heard whispers. You are in an election year. Let us know why you deserve that very same chair once again. Let us get started, shall we? Our roads are in the worst shape in my lifetime. Prior council members ensured that our ordinances were followed. Today, we're changing 5B, an ordinance for paving. Anything could be changed, but not if, if not enforced, those words mean nothing. And to those who sat in the chairs previously, it all just gets ignored. You, the rest of the council, along with the mayor, or Duck Dynasty, not only disrespect those who have taken those seats, but also the good people of Scranton. Our crosswalks are finally being painted, a year and a half after I mentioned it, but with the wrong paint. Did you address that? Do you think DPW should have taken that responsibility? They have done so every year previously. How do you feel about the roads? Do you think the PA Water should become more responsible for the pave cuts? The city enforcing the ordinances, do you think PA Water needs to come before caucus very soon? Answer for their blatant disrespect towards the citizens, our city, our council, and you personally. Do you think the city residents deserve a pave cut inspector? The company that currently inspects our roads is not from Scranton. They don't know our roads. Unfortunately, because of the current climate, the mayor has created. We have the most blighted neighborhoods ever. Do you believe that DPW should be knocking these properties down? Blight is currently being handled as a clerical function instead of DPW. Do you think it should be taken back by DPW? We've all witnessed neighborhoods going downhill for the past five years. Do you believe that blighted neighborhoods also cause crime? We witnessed tractor-trailers striking lower railroad bridges. There was another one today. They're close to over 100 years old. Do you think an engineer should inspect these bridges and ask for replacement and raising the heights requirements? Do you think the city would be better served with an in-house engineer? How many times in the past did the city ask for an outside company to cut trees down? Now everything's being outsourced. We've outsourced so many things, like pave cut inspectors, crosswalks, knocking down blighted properties. Blight crew is part of the clerical union. I'm sure we both agree Rubicon is bogus. We had a refuge truck driver for 41 years. He knew where to go. Word to the wise, anything with con in it is no good. No one does it better than our 91 unionized DPW employees who continue to work without a contract. They've been through so much, the turnover at the top. They currently have their seventh acting director. Instead of an Eddie Pizzano, they ended up with the likes of Scott Gassenmeyer. They deserve better without insulting their intellectual abilities. Thank you to our amazing DPW employees. Change is coming. To the mayor, Scranton here. Your city is corrupt? Really? You are not even from here. On Saturday, your Oregon Ducks faced Penn State. Who are you picking? We all know when it comes to the city of Scranton, you choose yourself. With our city as your backup plan. Good luck Saturday. Duck Duck Page. Good evening, council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, 10 motions, comments?
Not at this time. Just what was brought up before. Well, I guess it'll come up on the motion. We want to get some, some of that detail that was brought up. We discussed in caucus, Mr. Coy brought up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. We got some answers back. I did post to the administration about updating residents. In our capital budget, there was over $5 million going towards housing buyouts in North Scranton and Kaiser Valley. And I did ask that the residents be informed of this. I did speak to several of those residents who weren't informed of it. But I reached out to the administration to see when that had last been done. And the answer that I got was that all members of the buyout program are updated in April when the BRIC grant was canceled. A meeting for impacted residents, both in Kaiser Valley, in the Kaiser Valley Stormwater Projects, and residents for the buyout program, was held on May 15 of 2025, where residents were invited and encouraged to attend. Those residents that I spoke to did not attend this meeting and were unaware of it. Any questions on the project impacting them in regard to the buyout program? Residents were made aware by the city's application to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and that's where that funding in our capital budget is coming from. For funding and appraisals that would be completed, we respond to all inquiries from residents as they are received. So at this point in time, it seems there was a meeting on May 15, but the city administration has not reached out to those neighbors. So if we could just contact the city administration and just, please ask that they update these residents that are affected. There's 20 properties in total. It doesn't seem like a lot to be, to be updated on those projects.
I will, sir.
I inquired about Ferdinand Street. It was quite some time ago. We spoke about Ferdinand Street. At the time, I was told that it was going out to bid. The answer that I got back about the 1800 block of Ferdinand Street was that the city completed the FEMA work on Ferdinand Street that was out to bid earlier this year, which included debris removal and road stabilization. However, the paving work for the street is going to be added to the 2026 paving list. So those from Ferdinand Street, that will be occurring in 2026, according to the answers that I got this week. I want to thank DPW for Crisp Ave. Last week, the department did a great job on Crisp Ave, replacing the bar ditch on the side of the road. Then they replaced it with stone. They cleaned out that ditch that had been filled with, with sediment for several years now, and it was coming across the property into several residents' yards, which inevitably goes into the Frank Street, to the crick on Frank Street. So the residents came to me with their concerns, and I had the opportunity to see the site during a storm. Those improvements were made last week, and the residents Those improvements were made last week, and the residents did call to express their thanks to the department that completed that project. For the last two weeks since the SRA Director was in, I had asked at that point in time that any kind of budgets or audited financial statements be sent over to council. Did we receive any of those yet from the SRA?
We did, and I sent them to council.
All right. Thank you very much. We got an answer on South Subner Streets, which I did relay, and I believe that's all for tonight, Mr. Smell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. I have a few. First off, I also wanted to point out on, on 5B, I brought it up in caucus that, that we didn't have any specifics or information on what was changing with the ordinance. So I was disappointed to, to see that. And we can introduce tonight, but I, but we obviously need that, that information before considering this legislation further. Regarding the unsheltered task force, I know there's a meeting set for mid-October that I plan on attending, but I'd like to find out in advance of that meeting because of the urgency of making sure that we have a Code Blue shelter in place for once it starts getting cold out. If we could please ask the administration what their current plans are on, on the Code Blue shelter, and if there are any updates on it. Thank you. And another thing that I wanted to mention, over the weekend, we were at Connell Park. I think each weekend, we're visiting a different park. I didn't mean for it to be that way, but we're just going around city parks and just noticing things as, as we do that. And over at Connell, while we were there, someone did come by from the city to empty the trash cans out. But then I noticed a little while later, there was a woman walking around with gloves and garbage bags, and she was just a, a resident who was going around picking up litter and trash from the park. So I thought, well, why, why should she have to be doing that? I mean, they came to empty the garbage cans, but they should also be cleaning up the park and taking litter from it. So I'd like to make sure that that's happening on a regular basis from our Parks and Rec Department with all of our parks, but I want to make sure that that's happening at Connell too, because resident, I mean, it's great that she was taking it upon herself to do that, but residents shouldn't have to be doing that when we have our Parks and Rec Department.
I'll send that out.
Okay. Thank you. And then one thing I received a response on from last week, someone who was asking about the rear of 621 Alder Street, and it's an overgrown vacant property that's been in bad shape for quite a while. And the response I've received in reference to it is that the redevelopment and blight coordinator visited it this week, and the overall viability of the home is unknown due to the overgrown lot surrounding it. So must be pretty, pretty severe. We'll seek a formal review from Berry Isit for consideration for future demolition. So that's all that I have currently on that property, but we'll stay on top of it to see what Berry Isit has with their review. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandry, any motions or comments?
I have a few responses from inquiries that I sent on the 9th and the 16th and a couple other things. So first off, I asked, does DPW embrace a program from elderly property owners that can't afford tree removal? The assistance from our city DPW to remove trees from their property has been much interest or activity, because I remember talking about this, but never seeing it implemented. Because I've had people reach out to me that maybe their neighbors are having problems and can't afford tree removal, but these trees are, you know, encroaching or growing over the neighbor's yard. So what I was told is yes, the city of Scranton does embrace such a program. The Office of Community Economic Development Dangerous Tree Removal Assistance Program is specifically designed to help low to moderate income homeowners, including elderly residents who can't afford the high cost of removing dangerous trees or branches from their property. So I asked, you know, I wasn't really aware of this. I don't think the public was. I think, you know, and I said, how, how does this work? And so what I received was, to qualify, residents must live in Scranton, obviously, own and occupy their home, carry and share proof of insurance, have a tree or branch marked as dangerous by city code enforcement, the blight coordinator or, or the city forester, and meet household income requirements. This program provides assistance at no cost to the homeowner, ensuring the safety concerned. So this sounds like a great program, but I don't think anybody was really aware of it, outside of me just seeing it for a couple minutes before in, in the spring. But it says, since launching, the city has received an overwhelming response, quickly reaching the budgeted limit for available assistance for the 2025 fiscal year. The strong interest demonstrates both the need and the effectiveness of this program, particularly for the elderly and low-income homeowners who would otherwise struggle. Like I said, this is, sounds like a great program. So could we get a little more information on it? It might, okay, so the funds are exhausted. I get it. But so maybe next year, this could be more visible to the public, either, either on the website. Obviously, it's on the website, but I was unable to find it. Or through, you know, social media posts. We seem to see a lot of other stuff. I don't remember seeing this at all. So if we can get a little bit more, more information and see how this will be marketed next year for the people that really need it. All right? Also, there's two inquiries, inquiries here that actually, Mr. Schuster asked, but somehow it may be a little confusion here. Anyway, regarding the tree cutting, the tree cutting position with the city of DPW, is this position currently filled? Says Mr. McCandry indicated that the employees may have been out of this position. So we asked if there's possibly two different job descriptions that are present for the position. If so, have they been mutually agreed upon, or if there has been some update that has occurred unilaterally when it comes to the tree cutter position? So the response we received is, the tree trimmer position has not been filled. The city is working with union leadership to address this position. Also, I asked, you know, to reach out to the city engineer regarding the remaining crossing walk at Lincoln Jackson Academy, because this was a big one last year. I brought up a couple of times, you know, and then in lieu of all the other ones that were done. So I remember there was a pause. So what my, the response I got, the city has prioritized this crosswalk. I mean, it's, my grades are going to be due in a couple of weeks for the first quarter. So this, this should be done above, you know, and instead of all the other ones that are everywhere you turn around. This is more of a safety issue for our students. What else do I have here? So I asked, is the law, this was on, this was on the 9th. Is the law enforcement team still consisting of the SPD, Lackawanna County Sheriff's, and District Attorney's Office, continuing to address the drug-opiate crisis in our area from the Joint Task Force Stamp Point? And what I got back was, the Scranton Police Department remains steadfast in all of our, all of our criminal investigations to include narcotics and opiate enforcement. Our partnerships with law enforcement agencies remain stronger than they've ever been and contribute to our ability to solve crime. We remain committed to addressing the drug-opiate crisis and any crime associated with it. And, you know, it's evident that a couple of public service announcements that were posted by the District Attorney's Office, that this is really happening, and they're doing a fantastic job. So I'm happy to hear that. I also asked if they would, the SPD would revisit the large increase in ATV activity, electric bikes, you know, everybody knows it's a problem. And the response, and there's a new strategy to address this, because what we're doing really isn't working. Because I remember they spoke of a triangulation method to track ATV, others, and other offenders versus the danger to public of chasing these operators on the, on the city streets. So any non-registered, non-insured vehicle on our roadway is illegal. We know that, and poses a safety factor. Of course, we know that. Again, like I said, the past two weeks, I was driving home from work yesterday, and one of them, electric bikes are flying in and out of Main Avenue on the way home. It's dangerous. Someone's going to get killed. No helmet, but these are electric bikes. It's crazy. So the police department is committed to traffic safety and do enforce such violations. Anyone aware of the identity of persons committing traffic violation using these devices should forward, forward to the SPD for follow-up. So what they're saying, and, and, and you know, it kind of makes sense. If we're not going to chase them because of safety issues, you know, maybe when we see them, we should try to identify them and, and pass this on to the police department. I also asked, let's revisit vehicles parking on sidewalks along Harrison Avenue, knowing that many of the properties have garages and off-street parking, but they continue to park on, in the street. And what we were told is that has been received and is still added, was added to the SPD's enforcement schedule, so they'll take a look at it. So I also mentioned in caucus that last weekend, you know, my understanding, there was a rash of break-ins and home invasions. I know of one that actually happened a couple of doors up from my house, which was horrific and crazy what happened. And I spoke to the neighbor, and, and she was, they were both shaken up, and I even was even shaken up. The problem I have is, you know what? We have crime in the city, whether you like it or not. I mean, of course, we don't like it, but this information should have got out from our administration to make everyone aware that this is going on. Not just my neighborhood. Do I care about the, I care about the whole city. The public should be informed when this type of behavior or criminal activity happens, so we're on guard. Instead of just, I don't know what happened, but when this, when situations like this happen, everybody needs to be informed. We all care about each other in the city. We all, we all want to protect each other in the city. But if this information doesn't get out there, and then, you know, shame on us or shame on the administration. All I can say is, guess what? Please lock your doors, lock your windows, because this is, this is, this is what happens. And like I said, I don't know if, if in fact, these situations happened on the weekend in other parts of cities. I can't verify it. But I can verify the one that was a couple of doors from my house, and it, and it's horrible. So I think the administration needs to get better at letting the public be aware when these incidents happen, just to be on guard. I'm kind of disappointed with that one. Also, it's no secret that last week, there was an incident at West Grand High School that forced a lockdown of a person that was appointed to the Human Relations Committee. Okay? And for clarity's sake, the mayor, for the most part, appoints everyone on the boards and authorities, except for zoning that we do, that council's responsible for. All right? So do we vet them? No, that's the responsibility of the administration. What actually happens when they come, when they come down to us, it's a formality vote. We have, we have no authority to appointing to any other boards or authorities, except for zoning. All right? So after seeing that, you know, that was reported to, to the paper, that this person, you know, pretty much abandoned his position in, in August, we were unaware of that, because we didn't really appoint him, per se, and that he had not participated in the past two years within that appointment. So that should be on the administration. That should have been taken care of prior to some of these incidents. This person should have been removed. So I just want to make the public aware. So I guess, you know, it's another thing that I didn't, I didn't think we should have to, but maybe anymore, when these appointments come down, we, we might have to take a little extra time and, and do some vetting. That's not being done, obviously, or not being done enough. And then, you know, part of that article said, you know, well, we'll try to replace this person, and then, of course, it'll be up to council to, what do you mean, up to us? It's a formality vote. If it was up to us, I'd like to make a motion right now to have this person removed from I just made a motion.
All right. So could I respond? Just, just.
Yeah, go ahead.
That, that board, that particular board, to have someone removed, the mayor cannot actually fire someone from that board or remove them. The board itself, actually, in its bylaws, has to request a person to be removed from that board. So, and I know they haven't been there in, in two years. I know that also. But also, there are some legal issues to fire somebody that has had some, a few issues right now, as, you know, is that why we're firing them or removing them from the job? It's not, I know it's not a paid position, but it would still be, make us a bit liable.
Well, how would I make a motion that that committee starts the process?
They did say they started it.
Okay.
Yes, they did tell me that.
Well, like, again, we're not aware. I wasn't aware that this person didn't participate in two years.
I didn't.
I wasn't aware that as of August, he abandoned his position. But I am aware, when it was reported in the paper, that, oh, you know, for the most part, it comes down to council. Well, I guess it doesn't. All right. What else do I have? Oh, another thing, too.
Before we move on from that, though, are we aware that the commission started that process? We've been, we've been told that?
Yes, I was told this afternoon they did.
Okay. Because I mean, I would be.
The administration requested them start it. They agreed.
Okay. All right. So we, we have that update. So, I mean, I would be in favor of, of making that motion, that the board make the recommendation. So let's see what we get next week. Could we just get an update, ask for an update on that, Mr. Volenberg?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Also, since we, you know, we've heard, all this was, we heard secondhand, is there any truth that the Parks and Rec Director has resigned formally? Here and everywhere I go, have, have we heard it as a body?
I believe he has. I was told by a city employee at a meeting that he had resigned, and his last day would be this Friday.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCandry. I have one, Joe. Your question for the people downtown, there's actually four employees. It was funded by Senator Marty Flynn, the city of Scranton, and Lackawanna County. We all put money in. And what it does, it, it funds these four positions, and their job will, would be for, for blight, for garbage. Any type of maintenance downtown, replanting gardens, weeds, buildings that are not being used, are abandoned, you know, they don't cut their grass, or like you said, they blow all their garbage out into the street. This is their job will, is, to do all of this. And it's funded naturally by the three bodies. I was told if there's something that you, you see or whatever, this is, program is directed, it seems, pretty much by Scranton tomorrow. So, because they're there in town all the time, and they deal with everyone downtown. So if there's a, somebody doesn't put their garbage out the back or not using a dumpster, they, these guys will go and clean all of that stuff up. But it is, I know it's for a minimum of one year, but it may be a few years we're going to have them for. But, and the county did give them an office in the garage in the rear of the county building. So they have a, a place to go, and that's been their job for the past, I believe it's only two weeks now that they're out, but you can see a difference downtown already. So, and, and that's what they were doing. Also, I received two days ago, the audit for Liquor Fuels Tax Fund from January 1st, 2023 until December 31st of 2024. This should be, if it is not already, available on the city's website. So if anybody would like to see that audit, it should be available shortly. That's all, Mr. Volenberg.
5B for introduction, an ordinance repealing outdated provisions regarding the city's paving of streets.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. I believe everyone up here on council is in favor of getting what those changes would be. We discussed it in caucus, and we'll be awaiting that for, for next week.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
I have already emailed Attorney Escora, asking for what changes are going to be made and the reasons that it is necessary.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution donating a historical chair to the Lackawanna Historical Society.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. So moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution, accepting the recommendation of the Historic Architectural Review Board and denying the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a digital billboard located at 141 Jefferson Avenue.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Multiscape Inc. to perform construction services for the Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. This legislation includes $18,600 for the removal of streetlights. Can we just verify that this is streetlights and not traffic lights?
I did verify that today.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, on the question. I was concerned, because when I saw this legislation, I saw that eight lights were going to be removed. And, you know, there's been a lot of back and forth with this walkability study. And for the past, for the past two weeks, I asked, and I'm going back here till the September 9th meeting, if the administration has a timeframe on when legislation related to the walkability study, traffic light removal, with stop line replacement, may be expected. The answer I got was technical specifications for this legislation are currently being completed by the project engineers. Once completed, it'll be sent to council. So when I quickly looked at this legislation, and I went through it, and the bid that was awarded, it wasn't clear as to what type of lights, but it said, "Streetlights are being removed." I wish that administration, because this is on my radar, and a lot of, a lot of people in the community, especially, we've received emails from, from the Blind Association concerned about this, which I am also concerned, from Centers for Independent Living, they're concerned with replacing lights with stop signs. And so I too reached out to our solicitor and said, "Okay, help me, let's get some clarification," because it wasn't clear about what lights are being removed. And so my understanding is, this is only a piece of that whole project, and that, you know, it's probably going to come here, another piece of legislation, removing the streetlights, which I'm not in favor for, and I'll be prepared when that comes. But for clarity's sake, I reached out to our solicitor, and thank you for clarifying that. And that is all I have on the question.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the United Neighborhood Centers of NEPA to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $150,000 to be used towards the exterior upgrades project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor, introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and move item 5F to seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to suspend the rules and move item 5F to seventh order for a final vote. On the question?
Yes. On the question, this piece of legislation, as well as the next one, 5G, we were requested to move both of those to seventh order tonight because of the grant deadlines and needing to pass them before the end of the month. And so we've noticed this trend in the past with some grants. And I don't, I feel like the administration might not have an early enough deadline for, for entities to submit these grant applications to the city, and then for them to come to council. I'm not saying it's on, you know, on the fault of the city, but I'd like to see them provide a bit more of a buffer time to these organizations because I get that, you know, maybe some of these later submissions, they still wanted to accept because they're worthy causes and worthy projects that we'd like to be able to help them out. But then it does put the council in a difficult situation with having to move them to seventh order within, within the same meeting. So if we could please make that request of the administration, and I know in our caucus, Solicitor Gobright also did say he would, he would discuss this issue with legal. That's all that I have on the question.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. So moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of Lavish Wigs to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $50,000 to be used towards the Lavish Wigs Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. So moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and move item 5G to seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to suspend the rules and move item 5G to seventh order for a final vote. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, filed to council number 94, 2025, amending chapters 379 of City Code, Secondhand Goods and Dealers, to explicitly authorize requiring electronic submission of information and to update other licensing and enforcement provisions.
At this, as chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally, lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, filed to council number 95, 2025, authorizing entry-level employment in the police department without competition under certain conditions affecting public safety.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. So I did, I saved this answer for, on the question, with this specific item. I did ask last week or the week before about the Civil Service Commission in September, and if the administration had any information from that solicitor or board to show their opinions in favor of this legislation. So the answer I did get back was that the commission didn't meet in September, but it was proposed to them at the meeting before. So it would have been the August Civil Service Commission's meeting. It does say that the chief and the law department have been in close communications with the commission's solicitor, who are, is prepared to assist the commission in implementing this legislation. And the police CBA does not, it doesn't cover anything other than the fact that the Civil Service Commission does have to certify this list. I would like to make a motion to table item 7B until we could just get the opinion from the Civil Service Commission's solicitor, who in this answer, it does say they're prepared to assist with this legislation. So if we could just get that opinion from the commission, I think it would, would help to ensure that we're doing this properly. So I'd like to make that motion to table until we reach out to the commission to get their official opinion.
I'll second, because this is a really time-sensitive legislation. I mean, I understand it's this lateral, these lateral hires have happened in the past. And this is more of a, what am I trying to say? Something in writing for the, for this to, you know, to occur. So if we need opinion of their solicitor, and we can wait a week, I'm okay with that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. On the question? So we'll do a roll call, please, on just the, to table it.
Yeah.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. So this item will be tabled until you either get the answer or the next available date is open.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, resolution number 255, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Scranton Fire Department to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $120,000 to be used towards three new generators and two new boilers.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally, lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 256, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Steamtown Church to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $78,000 to be used towards the Steamtown Church sidewalk project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally, lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 257, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Weston Park Baseball to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $52,370 to be used towards the Weston Park Baseball Field renovation project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally, lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 258, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Scranton Cultural Center to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $96,416 to be used towards the Scranton Cultural Center facility upgrades project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick? Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally, lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 259, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Providence Pregnancy Center to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $42,840 to be used towards the paving of 17,700 square feet of blacktop parking areas and driveway project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick? Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally, lawfully adopted.
7H for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 260, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the Community Development Properties Scranton Inc., doing business as CDPS, to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $153,300 to be used towards the repair of a non-operating elevator project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second.
On 7H? 7H?
Yes.
Okay. What, we have a second? What is recommendation of the chairperson? Second, as chairperson. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7H legally, lawfully adopted.
7I for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 261, 2025, as amended, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $150,000 to be used towards the Davis Street pedestrian crossing project, as well as traffic control safety measures at the intersection of Luzerne Street and Green Ridge Street.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7I legally, lawfully adopted.
7J for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 262, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of Valley in Motion to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $105,000 to be used towards the Bike Lane Project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7J.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7J legally, lawfully adopted.
7K, formerly 5F, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 266, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the United Neighborhood Centers of NEPA to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $150,000 to be used towards an exterior upgrades project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee, for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7K.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7K legally, lawfully adopted.
7L, formerly 5G, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 267, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of lavish wigs to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $50,000 to be used towards the lavish wigs project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7L.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7L legally, lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed to Council number 91, 2025.
This ordinance is 2026 capital budget, and has been tabled until a public hearing could be held this evening. It will be brought back from the table next week and placed in seventh order for a final